If anybody in the back of the room can hear me, please raise your hand. If anybody in the middle of the room can hear me, please raise your hand. How about the front? We have a brand-new sound system here in the conference room.
Not sound system, visual system.
And this, this meeting is the test run, the beta test.
Well, technically, it's the second. Board of Ed was here last night.
Oh, the Board of Ed was here?
Board of Ed was here last night.
And they were happy?
I didn't hear otherwise.
Oh, I'm sorry I missed their meeting. Well, okay. The September 12th meeting of the Long Hill Township Planning Board. Confuse me. Called to order at 7:34. Can we have the announcements, please?
Yes. It's been a while since we've had a meeting. Pardon my... All right, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice if this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi-judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 p.m. at any regular or special meeting or hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting or hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Number four, electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute all cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interfere with the proceedings. Five, pledge of allegiance. And now for the roll call. Mayor Lavender.
Present.
Committeeman Ray is excused this evening. Ms. Dill?
Present.
Mr. Hands?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Malinowski is excused this evening. Mr. File?
Here.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Chairman Sandow?
Here.
Chairman, we have a forum.
Thank you. Before we start on the application, I'd like to announce that we will terminate this hearing at 10:15 because we've got about 15 minutes' worth of miscellaneous business to attend to, and we don't want to keep the crowd sitting through that before we start the hearing. So we will end at 10:15, so we have a few minutes at the end to get rid of the administrative stuff. Also, before we start, I would like to ask if there are any attorneys in the audience who are representing residents in the audience. If not, okay, if there were, you'd have, they'd have some favored position in the agenda, but if not, then we'll just treat this without. Before we start, Counselor, you want to make any announcements?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if we're calling the first and only public hearing this evening, then I would announce that I did have an opportunity to review the notice for the Mario Parisi, Amalia Parisi, and Joseph Parisi application on Delaware Avenue. I found the content of the notice to be sufficient. I found it to be timely served, published on August 31, certified mail service August 30, both at least 10 days prior to this evening. So, and with the understanding from our clerk that the certified mail slips were cross-referenced. Correct?
Yes.
It's my, then it's my opinion that the board has jurisdiction to hear and decide the application.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this point, let us begin to hear application number 23-07 Papa, application to subdivide Block 13302, Lot 1601. Counselor, your microphone.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, board professionals. Frederick Zelli standing in for Vincent Buzanio, Buzanio and Lefler, on behalf of the applicants, the Parisi family. This is-
Can you hear him in the back? Raise your hand. Oh, I not get- Try again.
Good evening. Frederick Zelli standing in for Vincent Buzanio, Buzanio and Lefler, Baskin Ridge, on behalf of the applicants, the Parisi family. Family is the owner of a vacant 10-acre lot on Delaware Avenue. As you indicated, it's Block 13302, Lot 16.01. The lot is bisected by the unimproved portion of Delaware Avenue. Northerly, northerly portion of the lot is located in the R2 zone. The southerly portion is located in the C conservation zone. No development will occur in the C zone, though, and it will remain undisturbed. This application before you this evening is for preliminary and final major site plan approval, I'm sorry, subdivision approval, with several variances. The applicant seeks to create four residential building lots, all fronting on Delaware Avenue, and the applicant will not be constructing any of the homes themselves whatsoever. This portion of Delaware Avenue, as you know, is a paper street, and the applicant will improve the street, if this is approved, to township standards. The completion of Delaware Avenue has been anticipated by the township since 1972, according to the master plan of 1996. Four lots to be created will have public water and septic systems unless sewer approval can be obtained. Proposed Lots 16.011, 013, and 014 are located totally in the R2 zone. Proposed Lot 16.012, which is a much larger lot, is split between the R2 zone and the northerly portion, on the northerly portion, and the C zone, conservation zone, on the southerly portion. As I stated, however, no disturbance is proposed for the C zone. That will stay in its natural state. We're requesting from the board the following relief, preliminary and final major subdivision approval for the four lots. On proposed Lot 16.012, the proposed home is located in a critical area, and the front building setback has to be 50 feet from the critical area, and the side yard has to be 25 feet. Lot does not comply with either of those, obviously, as the site itself is on that critical area. We're also seeking a variance for proposed Lot 16.011, even though we currently meet the setbacks for all yard requirements. We are close on those, however, so to be conservative, we're seeking variance approval for not being far enough back from the critical areas. Again, these are steep slopes areas. We're suggesting a five-foot variance for that, just in case, but again, as planned now, as the plan shows now, we actually comply. Proposed Lot 16.012, as stated, is in the R2 and the C zone. Zone requires 130,680 square feet, and we have 121,968. This is an existing condition. It is not being changed by the application, and again, no construction is being proposed for the part of the C zone.
Mr. Zelli, that, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that last reference with the lot area, that was only as to Lot 16.012, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Proposed Lot 16.012.
That's correct. Again, it's our position, it's not clear at all that a variance would be required for that, as the lot itself far exceeds the requirement, but we're looking specifically at the amount of acreage in the C zone. If you look at only that portion and compare that to the zone requirements, that's why, it's to be cautious, we're seeking a variance for that. Finally, the portion of the proposed Lot 16.012 in that zone requires a minimum lot width of 250 feet, and we only have 155. However, again, there's no development proposed in the C zone. There's no frontage whatsoever on any part of the C zone. So again, at most, this is just to be conservative and to make sure we've covered all of our bases. We have just one witness this evening, however. I'm asking for two people to be sworn in. Our engineer, Kelly O'Sutch of ENLP, will be our sole witness, direct witness. He will be testifying both as a professional engineer and a professional planner. I would also ask that Mario Parisi Jr. be sworn in. He's seated to my right and would be present to ask, sir, any questions that may come up that Mr. Sutch would not be particularly qualified to answer.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I'll also ask our board professionals to raise their right hand and be sworn in as well, our engineer and our planner. So, Mr. Parisi, I believe you're being sworn in. Please raise your right hand. Do all four of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you all. Back to you, Mr. Chairman. And maybe back to you, Mr. Zelli. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Sutch.
Good evening.
Oh, Sutch, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Kelly O'Sutch, ENLP, we are the design engineers, engineers for the applicant. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, both in good standing. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Virginia Tech in 2012, and I've testified before planning boards, land use boards, zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey in both capacities as an engineer and a planner.
I would ask that he be qualified for both fields of expertise.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just wanted to get confirmation from the witness that he's been accepted by those boards, that he referenced as both an engineer and a planner in an expert capacity.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any objection? No. Proceed.
Thank you. So, again, good evening. I have a exhibit. It's not really an exhibit, it's the actual filed plans that are before the board. No revision date, so the-
Mr. O'Sutch, your microphone is detachable if you want to carry it with you.
That'll help. Hello? Can you hear me? So the last revision date on the set is August 30, 2023, and it's the major subdivision plan for Mario Parisi. And then I'll have individual sheets that I'll be referencing within that set.
Okay, since it was submitted more than 10 days in advance of this evening, it does not have to be marked as an exhibit if the chairman so concurs.
Okay. I'm assuming I can move forward?
Please do.
Okay. So the plan in front of you is the boundary and topographic survey. It is representing the existing conditions and the boundary of the existing property. The existing property is known as Block 13302, Lot 16.01 on the Long Hill tax maps. On this plan and all the plans that you see, north is on the left side of the plan, south is on the right side of the plan, east and west. Just so everybody has an orientation of the property. The subject property is 10.44 acres, and it is surrounded to the north and the west by single-family residential, to the east by Chestnut Run, which is a multifamily development, and then to the south by New Jersey Department of Transportation, NJDOT, excuse me, right-of-way for an existing railroad. The majority of the portion, or the majority of the property, as was previously mentioned, is in the R2 zone. It's approximately 7.57 acres that are within the R2 zone, and then a small portion along the southern portion of the property, from approximately this boundary up, is within the C zone, the conservation zone, within the township, and that's 2.86 acres of area. It's worth noting, and I think it was noted before, that the C zone requires three acres where we are substandard existing with 2.86 acres. So it's a non-conforming, it's an existing non-conformity to the zone. The lot is located between two stubs of Delaware Ave., which is a public street, a local public street within Long Hill Township, and it abuts the property on either side. The property in general is generally undeveloped, with the exception of there's an existing 10-foot-wide stone drive that kind of runs through the center of the property, and there's an existing sanitary sewer main that also runs through the center of that portion of the property as well.
Does that run under the avenue or somewhere else?
So there's an encompassing the stone drive and the sanitary sewer main, there's an existing roadway easement, as it's noted in the deed of the property, and that roadway easement encompasses the entire sanitary sewer main and the stone drive. And that roadway easement ties in on either side of the property with the existing right-of-way of Delaware Ave. on both the eastern and western portion of the property.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand exactly where is the sewer line? Is that right under that?
It's, it's a-
That 10-foot?
Yeah, it's not in, it crosses over in parts of that stone drive, but it's generally running through the center of this easement.
So it would be, it could be on the north side, as it moves east, it could be on the south side as it crosses through that property?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's generally following the center line of the stone drive. So basically, they installed the main and then put a stone drive over top of the main. So the northern, so the, as I kind of noted, there is an existing easement, and that easement bisects the property, as we'll call it out, into a northern section of the property and then a southern section of the property. The northern section of the property is wooded and undeveloped and generally has gradual topographic relief on the property. There's a high point on the western side of the property, and grade generally grades towards the eastern property line. The northern section of the property is free of any state-regulated areas and is otherwise not regulated with any NJDEP or local critical area requirements. The southern section of the property is, generally has gradual topography right along the easement, but as you move further south, the topographic relief becomes a little bit more steep and eventually gets into an area that would be defined, and I'll show you on the next sheet, into a critical area within the local municipal ordinances. Then, once you get through that critical slope section, it becomes more gradual, again, the topographic relief, and then eventually flattens out and very gradual topographic relief along the railroad right-of-way and some of the state-regulated areas. So on the southern portion, along the right-of-way, there is an existing wetland with an existing 150-foot transition area, and that has been verified by DEP, and then there is a flood-hazard area, which has also been verified by DEP, and they're both valid and in good standing.
And for the record, we are not seeking to disturb any of those areas or any buffer zones, correct?
Of the state-regulated areas, no. Okay, I have Sheet 4 in front of you now, which is named the Existing Critical Area Plan. As you can see, on the southern section of the property, there's a gray highlighted area or gray hatched area, and those represent slopes greater than 15% on the property. Off of those slopes, for any principal structure, there is a 25-foot buffer for any structure in a side yard and a 50-foot buffer for any structure within a front or rear yard. I believe I have that right. For a prop, or for a proposed, any type of structure. As you can see, all the critical slopes are located on the southern side of the property, and they're generally located in the, what I'll call, the middle of that southern section. And then again, it's kind of worth noting that existing sanitary sewer line and roadway easement is kind of bisecting the property and defining where any proposed development would be off of. Sheet 5 of the plans is the major subdivision plat. So we'll get into what's being proposed as part of this application. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the 10.44-acre lot into four individual lots and dedicate a 50-foot-wide right-of-way to the township for the ultimate building of Delaware Ave. to connect it between the western stub and the eastern stub that currently exists. The four lots, we have them noted that as Block 13.302, Lot 16.013 would be on the northern section, and the numbering of the lots, both block and lots, has been confirmed by the tax assessor. So Lot 16.013 will be 71,999 square feet or 1.65 acres, and that lot would be fully conforming for lot width, area, and all other zoning requirements. The lot to the east of that would be 16.014. That will be 77,415 square feet or 1.78 acres, and again, that lot would be fully conforming with the lot width, lot area, and all other zoning requirements. On the southern section of the property, we have Block 13.303, and then we have Lot That is 48,340 square feet, which is 1.11 acre, and again, this is conforming with the lot area, the lot width, and the otherwise bulk requirements of the zone. We will get into critical slopes in a minute. Block, the remaining lot is, again, Block 13.303, Lot 16.012, and that will be a total of 238,512 square feet or 5.48 acres. And that lot is further broken down into the two separate zoning areas of both the R2 zone and the C zone. So again, we're not changing the boundary of the C zone. The R2 zone would have 116,544 square feet or 2.68 acres, and then the C zone has the remaining 121,968 square feet or the 2.8 acres that previously existed in the C zone and would remain in the C zone. And again, this lot conforms for the lot area and the lot width of the R2 zone. And I guess for all other.
Mr. O'Sutch, just to be clear, the lot as a whole also conforms well in excess of the C requirement, but the area that's within the C zone is what does not, and that's why we're seeking the variance, correct?
Correct. Thank you. You now have Sheet 6 before you, and we have named the site plan, which is illustrating the site improvements associated with the project, and then is also visibly showing potential build-outs of the individual lots, more to show viability of the lots, and it's not illustrating actual proposed structures as part of this application. So as part of this application, the applicant is proposing to construct Delaware Ave. from the eastern portion to the western portion within that dedicated right-of-way. The road would match the existing road on either side, so it would be a 30-foot-wide road with curb on either side. Along the southern edge of the roadway, there would be a four-foot-wide sidewalk that would also connect the sidewalk that exists currently on the east and western portion of Delaware Ave. And then the, the eastern, or yeah, western portion of the property here is also illustrating an area for the stormwater management basin, which I'll get into a little bit further in the future here.
So do you mind if I just interrupt for a second?
Sure.
And just to set the scene a little bit, perhaps you can help here?
Yeah.
So I hear the word propose and illustration. We've heard subdivision, and we've heard road, Delaware Road, to be built through.
Yep.
So in summary, this is a subdivision. These illustrations of property, driveways and everything, is exactly that, illustration?
Those are just illustrations. They're not being constructed as part of this application.
To give a sense of size in relation to the boundaries and setbacks-
Correct.
-within those properties, so you can estimate what size of lots you want to subdivide into that makes some sort of sense.
Well, the, yeah, it's to, it's to prove that if we, if these lots got approved as part of the subdivision, that somebody could build a viable structure on the property.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that's clear to everybody. This is not, this is, there's a limit to what this is discussions about.
Correct.
And this is all illustration and theoretical some of it, hopefully with some facts to support that, but the actual facts of subdivision and build the road, Delaware Ave.
It's, well, the subdivision itself, the actual layout dimension meets and bounds of the lots, the road layout, all of that is specific, and we are seeking actual approval for that. The only thing that remains conceptual is the size, shape, and physical orientation of the homes.
That's fine. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. Thank you.
And please, anybody, stop me if I just start rambling. All right, so Sheet 7 is illustrating, it's named as the Proposed Critical Area Impact Plan, and again, to your point, these structures shown are not necessarily proposed, but they are showing any, that there is potential impacts to the critical areas as part of further development of the properties. And accordingly, on the southern section of the property, so both Lots 16.011 and 16.012, we are seeking relief from the critical area ordinances because we do see a potential for future develop, or future structures to be impacting those critical areas. Specifically on 16.011, that particular structure that's shown on the plans currently is not impacting any critical slopes or buffers, however, it's right on the edge of the buffer, and we do anticipate a potential- However, it's right on the edge of the buffer, and we do anticipate a potential structure and/or parking area as defined in the ordinance, and/or accessory structure, a shed, or anything that could potentially be built on the property, would be impacting those buffers and potentially the critical slopes as well. And then on 16.012, the principal structure, as we're showing it, would be directly within a critical slope, and accordingly, would be fully within any buffers, or there would be a zero-foot buffer because we're within the critical slope.
Mr. Satch, would you show us with the pointer that exact area of steep slopes?
So the, the steep slopes are the, again, the white-gray hatch, and then off of that hatch is a 25-foot buffer line and a 50-foot buffer line, and those are the critical slope buffers of 25 feet and 50 feet.
I'm sorry. That critical slope area also extends to the east, onto the adjacent property?
The critical slope itself, yes. It exists in Chestnut Run. It's just based on the actual topography.
And the west as well?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The critical area on proposed Lot 16.012, is that smaller, isolated area though, correct?
Correct. And, and the idea would be we would, we would anticipate the proposed development would be kind of isolated to that one critical slope area. And I'll get into kind of our limited disturbance here in a minute and our associated stormwater management system, but it kind of anticipates a certain limit of disturbance and a certain limit of development, which would not be much more, not further disturbed than what we're kind of showing.
Thank you very much.
Yep. This plan also has tables and illustrations to prove that the proposed lots would meet the requirements for the contiguous non-critical area requirements, as well as the 70% max of the impervious surface of the non-critical areas. And therefore, we would not be seeking relief from either of those sections of the ordinance. Grading and drainage plan. Again, the, there are no structures proposed, however, what we're showing on this sheet is kind of defining the limit of disturbance, the rough grading of the site to construct the roadway, as well as rough grade the properties, to ultimately construct the stormwater management system and conveyance system for the overall development. So as shown on the plans, there's a rough tree line defined on the perimeter of the proposed development, and that area is, I believe, let me get the number. So the limit of disturbance would be 2.8 acres, and accordingly, that would kind of align with the limit of tree clearing proposed as part of this application. So the applicant intends to build the road, build the conveyance system within the road and around the property to capture the proposed runoff, both from the road and any future dwellings, and convey those towards a stormwater management basin in the eastern portion of the property, which would be located within Lot 16.011. That basin has been designed currently to work for what is being shown on the plans here, but we're also working with the board's engineer to come up with a more robust plan that will anticipate the future development and, you know, further tweak the basin so that any development beyond what's being shown here is captured, treated, and detained within that stormwater management system, so that the site ultimately is fully compliant with the stormwater management rules.
With the most current stormwater management rules?
As of the time of application, correct.
And this application was submitted before or after the?
It was submitted before and deemed complete before the new stormwater rules went into effect.
It was deemed before the new stormwater rules were in effect.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, before the inland flood protection rules were adopted.
I'm sorry, can you speak louder?
Yes, thank you.
Before the inland flood protection rules were adopted?
That were adopted this year.
Correct.
So this, for clarity, this application was deemed complete before that new piece of guidance was.
Yes.
Put into production.
Correct. So we're using current design standards for the amended stormwater rules, which were adopted in 2021, as the last benchmark.
Thank you.
And if I didn't explicitly say it, it is a major stormwater project, based on the proposed disturbance and the anticipated future development of the properties, both from an impervious coverage standpoint and just a disturbance standpoint.
And you're stipulating to the, to the board treating it as such, and the engineer treating it as such, should there be an approval?
Correct. And there would be a maintenance manual associated with it, and I believe the engineer recommended a homeowners association be created to maintain and operate the system and all of the conveyance systems and other stormwater items on the property, which we believe the applicant would comply with.
Yeah, I'd like to park the HOA thing. I'll have some questions about that later.
Okay.
So just for clarity again, so all the stormwater, all the runoff, right now for this project, whether it's coming from a gutter, whether it's coming from the street, whether it's coming from the land itself, will all be captured and stored, stored in that basin on the, we'll call that the southeast side of Division Ave of the property?
"All" is an encompassing word?
Majority.
It, it's an, it will capture and detain enough to meet the requirements of the state stormwater rules.
Okay. And then where does it get discharged after that?
Uh, it's, it's discharged towards the southern section of the property, which is the natural grading pattern towards the railroad. There will be some of that water that also infiltrates into the ground as it's part of the, the design.
Thank you.
Sheet 12, so again, the individual units are not proposed as part of this application, but we are showing a utility plan of potential future improvements that could be built as part of this, just to, again, prove that the lots are viable, with the big thing being the proposed sanitary sewage and how that would be treated. We all know that there's a public sewer ban in the area. So accordingly, we've tested the properties, and they all have percolation in accordance with the Board of Health regs and the state regs, and therefore, we're showing rough areas that potential septic systems could be built on each lot, should they be built and a structure at any point in time doesn't want to go to the sewer, they could build and get approved septic on the individual lots.
Right now, two properties, the lot, the area there, two properties are slated for, or approved for sewer hookup. Is that right, two of the four? It's not identified which two.
Well, yeah, we're not, as, as part of this application, we're just saying, on all four lots, you could potentially build a septic, and if at the time of application, if you could connect to the sewer, then it would be the individual's right to either connect to the sewer or build a septic, whichever they feel.
Of construction.
Correct.
Should, should one of those properties be bought by a buyer?
Potentially.
Right, okay. Has there been an application or request for approval to NJ American Water for the other two properties to double, to, to go from two to four sewer hookups?
At this time, I don't believe there's been an application.
Is there?
No application, but we.
I'm sorry, have the, well, he's sworn in, I'm sorry, so he could testify.
So there's been no application, no formal application?
With the water company, and we are trying to anticipate, hopefully, that the storm ban gets lifted. So right now, there is an old letter in the file through the town that we can build two sewers, two, two hookups. So we're just playing it by ear, and we're just.
Being a little bit proactive?
Right, correct.
Okay. So we know that NJAW has a deadline to meet, make capacity in 2025. I think it's October of 2025, if I'm correct? Right?
Right, right around the corner. In the building world.
Yeah, so, fair enough. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Satch, just to be clear though, even if we couldn't have sewer for any of the four lots, you've shown that it's possible to have a septic on all four lots.
Correct. And we have a dedicated area of 1,000 square feet that we're showing, that is within areas that were tested with soil logs that have been reviewed by the health department under previous applications, but they still stand, and they proved that there was percolation And then lastly, we have the landscape plan. As part of this application.
Is that Sheet 14?
Sorry, yes, Sheet 14. Thanks, Steve. The applicant isn't proposing the structures, however, they are proposing to line the streets with street trees to be uniform with the development, both on the eastern portion of the property and the western portion of the property, to continue the look of Delaware Ave through this subdivision or through the property. And then to supplement the existing buffers that would remain, the applicant is proposing to construct some evergreen plantings and some substantial plantings on both the eastern boundary of the property and the southern, or the western boundary of the property as well. The internal landscaping of the individual lots would be kind of subject to further review during the individual lot developments of those.
So it looks like along the western edge, northern side, that borders Skyview, there seems, there may be a buffer from property line to where the proposed new trees are. Is that, do I see that correctly?
Uh, you're, to Skyview?
The western side, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Got my compass wrong.
So the existing tree line would roughly be 15 feet off of the property line, with the exception, as it comes back towards the road?
Gets closer, as we get closer to the vision. And then you're proposing to.
To sup-
In that landscape design, that there would be additional evergreens or, and hardwood trees planted along that property line as well?
Correct.
Okay.
And same.
Same on the.
Idea on the Chestnut Run side.
Thank you.
And then the last testimony, or last direct for engineering at least, would be that, as has previously been stated, we are not proposing to disturb or do any development within the state-regulated areas, and therefore, there would be no further DEP permitting from a land use perspective as part of this application.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to have the board make any questions, any inquiries regarding engineering, or should we go straight into?
Let's, let's pause and take questions on the engineering issues. And we will start with the board engineer.
So, let's start with, we'll start with subdivision comments, Section 3.
I'm sorry, can you just speak louder, more directly into the mic?
Subdivision comments. Subdivision comments, Section 3 of my letter.
Hold on a second, Joe. Can you hear him in the back of the room?
No. So we're starting with the subdivision review comments.
Can you hear him now?
Joe, speak like an attorney, Joe.
I apologize, I'm starting to lose my voice a little. So, starting with Section 3 of my report, page 3, subdivision.
Dated September 7, correct?
Dated September 7. There are a number of items here that had indicated no further action required, including compliance with Recordation Act of the Plans, and information requiring monumentation, and also with certifications of the boundary. As we move through, there are a number of comments where I address concerns over the easements to be established. The core of those elements in summary is that my position that as a major development for stormwater review, it would be in the best interest of the municipality not to have to own and operate any of the stormwater infrastructure. So it's my recommendation that the, both the private storm sewers in the, in the yards, as well as storm sewers conveying through the right-of-way, because they are predominantly conveying flows from the private lots, that all of it be easemented for private storm sewers by the, the owner of the property, the subject eventual entity that, we'll call it a potential homeowners association, for the four single-family lot owners, as there needs to be an entity in place to manage and operate the stormwater system, mainly the maintenance of the basins, the cleaning, as well as the infiltration basin, routine and annual inspections, and all of those required items. Alternatively, if the municipality was to own the sewers that are constructed in, in the right-of-way, then we'd inherently have to be a part of it, of that agreement and that maintenance requirement and obligation, and have to sort that out through the municipal attorney and the municipal engineer. Do you or your applicant have any concern with creating that boundary of responsibility?
Do we have any objection to forming a homeowners association for those purposes?
I'm not, I'm not very well informed on this. One of our initial reactions was not to do this, was to let the homeowners go about it individually, and that's how we proposed it. So before I answer, I certainly would do it if it's a requirement, but I would prefer not to do it if it's not a requirement.
So the homeowners themselves, as individual lot owners, my understanding is that they cannot, it's, it's like cutting it up. All right. The, see? How about that? Go figure. We got the video, we'll get the audio soon. So it's my understanding that the state cannot impose maintenance obligations on a single-family residential owner, and so in being a major development for the comprehensive development, there would have to be some entity that joins them all together, some agreement that forms them all together, and a basis of understanding, which is the principles of the homeowners association. My concern is not over the specificity of that association, but more specifically that the township does not have any maintenance and ownership rights over the infrastructure in the public right-of-way.
Obligations.
Obligations.
Right. The, and, and whether it's an HOA or an entity, is that something that the applicant stipulate, can stipulate to as a condition of approval, should the board approve the application?
As Mr. Precy has indicated, if that were to be required by the board, we would comply.
Yes. As a homeowner, we probably can ask 10 people in the audience here, as a homeowner, I would prefer not to be part of an association with a fee every month. I would prefer to take care of my own, do maintenance of my own, stormwater management. Stormwater is very.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Stormwater is, is cleaner than a source system or a septic system, and they, they require homeowners to actually clean their own septic tank. So a stormwater management system is going to be cleaner, easier than a. So, a stormwater management system is going to be cleaner, easier than a septic system. So, we're not, we're never required to have an association for a septic system, so why storm management? That's, that's my logic. And I personally would not want to be in an HOA for that particular storm management. But that's my personal opinion.
I can understand that position. With any approval granted to you by this board, you as the applicant and the owner of the property will inherit the maintenance responsibilities as a major development, because you are disturbing the land at this time and you are creating the stormwater system. So, respectfully, you need an entity to transfer those obligations to, else those homeowners would probably be taking the position that, that ownership and responsibility stays with you for the stormwater system. So, I think it's one or the other. Either you'll own the stormwater system in perpetuity and have easements over those lots for that obligation and that continued maintenance of the properties, or you're transferring that to an entity created by those four lot owners.
And, and, and in the event there is an approval, it may well be that the board has a preference, to put it lightly, as to which one of those two alternatives it would be.
Agreed. The, the importance for the municipality would be that the municipality doesn't inherit any obligations to that system, because the stormwater is essentially being conveyed through the right-of-way. It's a very de minimis amount that's being generated by the right-of-way, and the municipality wouldn't be generating on a public road anything that triggers a quarter acre of regulated motor vehicle. So, the municipality's position would be outside the major development standard.
Mr. Voight, do you know, or does anyone on the board perhaps know whether this is, whether there's precedent for this in other approvals?
That's actually my, my very question. We, I know that there is a stormwater management system on the, I'm going to call it the west side of Skyview. I don't know what the agreement, if there is an agreement with the homeowners in that area, or does someone take care of it? Does the town come in and take care of it? I have no idea. I know there's another one over by Stephanie Court, I think there's a storm basin. I do not know what the arrangements are there. So, I would defer to anyone who has any insight.
That's my neighbor on Skyview, and he takes care of it. The homeowner takes care of it.
That homeowner takes care of that?
Yes.
Okay. So, the towns, so the precedence is the town is not taking care of it, that homeowner is taking care of it?
Yes. That's very, that's pretty big.
Yeah. Because it's catching all of that down in the bottom of that hill in that valley area.
And there's a drainage on my development that I have no, there's no HOA on it, right? It's a whole thing, so get the point.
Yeah.
I just don't know what the precedent is in town for that type of, for that type of structure.
Well, it all goes to the standards and the regulations in place at the time of the filing of whatever application created each of these subdivisions. With respect to those to the east and west of this property, they were subdivided prior to the 2005 stormwater rules. So, those maintenance obligations were not in place. Since 2005 to 2021, with the amended stormwater rules, most commonly you saw subdivisions with a dedicated roadway, a dedicated lot for, for stormwater maintenance, and the, and the collection and conveyance of purely the municipal right-of-way conveyance into that basin, and a dedication of that lot to the municipality. So, often, the municipality wound up inheriting that maintenance responsibility. Since the amended stormwater rules with green infrastructure and other requirements, the, the imposed burden of maintenance is higher, it's elevated, and it creates a level of complexity that requires some form of agreement between the parties of this existing lot to then manage that system.
So, this is really because of more current...
Because the current regulations require a higher level of water quality standard.
So, this type of situation may not, historically, may not be a major thing.
Yes.
But going forward, you should be conscious of that.
Correct. And ultimately, it's the town's responsibility, under their MS4 permit, to impose these requirements on the property owners. So, the township needs an entity to turn to, to get maintenance records annually and file them as a pass-through to DEP.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Voight, that's not uncommon with respect to similar projects in other municipalities in your experience. Would that be correct?
That would be correct.
I would agree with that.
And is that for...
I'm sorry, the, it wasn't, my question wasn't posed to the engineer for the applicant, but with the chair's permission, I think I heard him answer.
I would agree with Mr. Voight's.
And is that for single-family homes or multi-dwellings?
No, it's specifically for larger subdivisions or larger projects.
And that could be four properties? It seems rather small, four properties being associated and having to take this on. But if it's new regulations going forward, that's new regulations. Nothing we can do about that. We have to take that and go forward with it.
Can I ask... I'm sorry, if I may, real quick. Mr. Such, in light of your response, would you agree, as a professional planner, that if the board were to impose such a condition of approval, there would be a reasonable nexus related to the application for development, and that stip, that imposition of that condition would be reasonable?
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, I thought that was important.
No, that's fine. It sounds like there's not, like, a perfect answer being that some of this is new. In here, you talk about it being put through an easement, and what I'm wondering, is it possible, and have you seen before, you're talking about the obligation being put on him, and then him retaining that even after the four homes are built? Is that what you're saying? In some world, there's a, where he's retaining the responsibility for the stormwater management? That's what you said?
That's, that gets into legal alternatives for his negotiation of the sale of any individual property.
No, I know. I'm not saying like whether he's actually going to end up with it. That's just the scenario that you're painting, right?
Well, yeah, what, the key of that is that with any approval provided by this board, he is proposing to create the basin, create the infrastructure, and therefore, it has to be maintained as of that trigger point, and that onus will be on him through a deed filed operations and maintenance manual. And it would be in his interest to have an opportunity to exercise that to some other party at a later date, if he is no longer interested in the property.
But when the four deeds are inevitably drawn up for the four properties, can those be, can the stormwater be put into those four deeds through an easement? I mean, this might be a question for you, Steve, out of it.
There would need to be, an, an agreement between those parties on what their maintenance responsibilities are to this, to the stormwater that's proportionate to them.
And it may be our engineer's opinion, and maybe even the applicant's engineer's opinion, that the preferential way to handle that would be through the creation of an HOA or similar entity for the four owners, so that it's one entity made, with that maintenance obligation, and that structure in place for a collection of funds, et cetera, to do so.
And that creates the structure for each lot to be developed individually and sold individually towards an end goal of an association.
No, I understand how an HOA would be beneficial, but I'm, it sounds like it's, there's also kinks to it, being that there's only four homes, and an HOA creates a whole set of burdens that a lot of people don't like. I'm just wondering if it's possible to have the four future homeowners keep the responsibility individually as a part of their deed with an easement in the deed to manage the stormwater.
There'd be a agreement between those four parties, as well as the, anything put in the deed, would be the requirement. There would have to be some agreement between them on who's responsible for what and how, what portions of costs, and so...
Can I interrupt here for a minute?
I'm not advocating for one or the other. I'm trying to understand what our options are, because it sounds like there's not a clear precedent, as you pointed out.
It seems to me we have a number of legal issues here that we're talking around. The individual deeds have to require membership in a homeowners' association. The, each of the properties needs an easement to send their water to the common detention basin. The homeowners' association has to be established and functioning, and membership required by deed. And the homeowners' association has to have some sort of an agreement with the owner of the lot that contains a detention basin, as to whether the association or the homeowner will take charge of maintaining the basin. And it seems to me that all this can be written out by an attorney...
Correct.
...in four or five parts, so we don't have to discuss it any further, since only a very few of us are competent to discuss it.
The assurance that I'd like to create tonight is that anybody reviewing a deed and doing title search to purchase the property in the future, understands that they're entering into a major development obligation for stormwater management. And I'll leave that to the legal side, because that's where it stands.
But if I may, the legal side needs to know if the applicant's stipulating to 3.1 through 3.12, and if they're not stipulating to any, the legal side needs to know that as well. That's 3.1 through 3.12 in the engineer's report where we left off. He was just summarizing those, those comments.
Yeah, I believe some of those comments have already been addressed, but we would...
I just need to know if you're not stipulating to any of them, and which ones, if you're not.
No. We're stip, or, we're complying with all.
Thank you.
May I return to an engineering question?
Yeah, please. Thank you.
We'll get out of the legal realm. Mr. Such, could you just describe for me what engineering alternatives you looked at to potentially avoid the centralized basin, which seems to be producing a lot of the agita here?
The centralized basin?
Did you look at any on-site alternatives for each of these lots?
For the stormwater management, is that your question? So, similar to what Joe noted, there is a rule that you're not supposed to be individualizing an overall stormwater system to one individual lot, or individual lots within an overall development. There is these green infrastructure rules, which we are going to comply with as part of this application and the stormwater management design, which limits the overall drainage area of a green infrastructure device to two and a half acres, which the proposed development would basically be right at that two and a half acres. So, we think it's the most efficient way to take care of the stormwater for the overall development, while still meeting the state's stormwater rules.
And then maybe this is a question for the applicant. Is the plan to develop and build these homes all at the same time, or are you looking at a phased approach here? Have you had a, have you thought through that?
I like your question when you asked, have I thought through that? And the answer is, I take day by day, there's really no exact playbook. One of the first things I will be doing is improving the road, doing road improvements. At that point, do I build the homes, do I not build the homes? It just sort of comes day by day. But one of my first intents would be to do the road improvement to the specs of the town, and if I start building homes or not, right now, the cost of buildings is high, interest rates are high, so the market, it's, it's tricky, to say the least.
So, you know, I, I guess where I'm going with that line of questioning, and Joe, this comes back to you, is there any way that we can avoid the major disturbance component of this being a significant development by agreeing to more of a phased approach? Does that change anything in regards to having to go through and, and deal with this centralized basin, which is creating the need for HOAs and easements and everything else that complicate this project?
As an existing lot, that stands currently in today's regulations, any future development of the lot subdivided will trigger what we call like a creeping major development assessment.
So, there's no timeframe?
No. So, so if this was just purely a land subdivision and no proposed improvements, there would be a balance of technical effort to be done by each of those properties, and it would essentially be first come, first served, to use up the acre of disturbance and the quarter acre of impervious, ultimately ending towards perhaps two of the lots being able to be developed outside major development, and then the other two lots having the bulk of the responsibility for the rest. So, it's actually a more comprehensive effort to look at it the way they have, to make the site pad ready and have viability with stormwater management for a major development comprehensively. And as Mr. O'Sutch noted, we're looking at bolstering the stormwater design to have a little bit more room for volume, so that as each lot might want a patio or an accessory structure, the compliance can be demonstrated cumulatively and never has to amend a larger effort to rebuild the stormwater basin and make it larger, make it 20% bigger.
And just for clarification, you're going to build the stormwater at the same time as the road, or is this, would that is still proposed as well?
Yes. It's going to be during the road time.
I'm sorry, you're doing, I think the, the question was road and stormwater simult, essentially simultaneously.
Yes.
Correct? Thank you.
Excuse me, I think that some of the board members and myself are thinking the same way about the HOA. No one, homeowners don't really like them. And also, I think we're all having a mental block when it comes to this word "major," when it's four homes. Because I, I've had a mental block with this, it's only four homes and the word "majors" side by side.
I've, I've fought that good fight for the residents of every community with the state of New Jersey for all of my professional career. So...
Yeah, I don't want to argue over the paint color and mailbox size.
Yeah.
It's a major subdivision, too.
It's a major subdivision.
But that's, that's by law.
Right.
I mean, that's pretty black and white.
And it's a...
Definition.
But just for clar, just go back to what we, HOA, and this is where I think you were going a little bit, just go through the options, right?
Any form of agreement that collects all four proposed lots, established lots, in a maintenance agreement.
Yeah. So, let me go through the options.
Oh, I thought you were asking me to.
No, no, no. I was just going to just go through, summarize. So, we have an HOA, just simply. HOA, where's the responsibility of the owners to maintain whatever value that is every year? I thought there was one point where you said Mr. Precy would maintain that, that cost. So, that's two options. And the third is only option that the township takes that responsibility.
That is an option.
Okay. And what would the option, what would that mean to the town, so they'd have to be responsible for the basin itself?
They would have easements over the private four lots, one over the proposed, the exit, the proposed easement of the basin for access to 16.01, but also to over the center line of any infrastructure that collects the yard drains.
And that's a discussion with the township to see if they're willing to take that responsibility, and maybe there's some, whatever, but those, those are distinctly three options.
Correct.
And going back to what you said, Dennis, is that something that we can work through?
Yes.
Because I'm sure, third option would be preferable to some people.
Yes.
Right? So, I'm going to say not, don't take any of those options off the table. We're in a position for that decision.
Correct.
Is that fair enough?
Yep.
Let me pose a question to Mr. Voight and Mr. Warner both. Would an alternative to the HOA be to have an easement agreement slash maintenance agreement in place between all four property owners ultimately, that would run with the land, and just specify contribution obligations, as opposed to forming a separate organization, which would have a limited role and just maybe unnecessarily cumbersome?
I don't believe there's a legal prohibition to that. It's, I believe, more a matter of preference for success of the maintenance and to whose obligation or obligations it would be.
Correct.
But I don't think there's a legal prohibition to that being a fourth possible alternative.
Those, the technical requirements could be satisfied in that manner.
It just seems to me that if you're going to have an uncooperative property owner, they can be uncooperative by not contributing to the organization, or they can be uncooperative by not doing what they're supposed to under a maintenance agreement. Either way, you're going to end up having to go to court to enforce it, God forbid.
Yes. And in this world?
That's where it'll be.
Well, an uncooperative property owner doesn't suddenly materialize as the owner of the property. A property owner sees the obligations in the deed before he purchases the property, does he not?
Well, the agreement can be in place between the applicant and the applicant and the applicant and the applicant initially, and then it would run with the land as those are conveyed off.
are conveyed off.
An HOA could also be in the deed.
It could. I'm just, I'm trying to avoid the complexity of having this organization, and I'm not seeing what it necessarily serves that a four-lot maintenance agreement wouldn't serve.
Well, it seems to me that if this board approves a subdivision, it would be on the basis that all the going-forward legal requirements are visible at the time of approval, which means that we would need to see that the deed by this applicant selling each of those properties, that that deed fully explains what the situation is that we're talking about now, and presumably the purchaser's attorney would counsel the purchaser as to whether or not he's willing to pay for those obligations.
Correct.
Correct.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What are the requirements of reporting to the DEP?
So annually, the municipality has reporting that has to be done. It's inclusive of how much grid is taken out of the basins that we own on public roadways, all the way through how many private detention basins are identified to the municipality, who the ownership responsibilities are.
There's two obligations. One is to maintain and the other is to report.
Yes.
And so why wouldn't we consider making this the responsibility of the town and considering it in the tax assessment?
There currently stands an existing EPA audit and/or, you know, the opportunity for DEP audits, and those maintenance responsibilities do not necessarily need to be the imposed burden of the municipality for private development areas, but more specifically, the MS-4 permit is really intended for municipally-owned property and municipally-owned infrastructure. So to get back out of the rabbit hole I brought us into, the point of me trying to summarize that group of comments was that there's a lot of ways to skin the cat on having a legal mechanism in place so that all the four properties in the future understand their obligations and that they're inherently tied by deed and other agreements, and that it's my recommendation to this board that our, any approval we provide exclude the municipality from any obligations in that agreement.
Could we get more, no disrespect to your, and it's great you did this, because I would not have known this level of detail, so this is good stuff, but I still, we can close the book on anything, and maybe that's a further conversation.
Correct. For example, the applicant can approach the committee anytime to ask for their consideration to be a part of that, to take ownership of the entire system and effectuate it in that manner instead.
So you're saying create an HOA, and at some point, maybe the town could absorb the responsibility for it?
Yeah, some sort of legal, I'm going to stop saying HOA, since everybody doesn't like the idea, some legal mechanism that ties those four property owners together with a clear understanding of what they're buying into and what they're required for continual maintenance. Like we said, if there's an association and fees aren't being paid, and then there's a mechanism between them to assure that it occurs, because there is inherently a downstream end. There's, Lot 16.01 needs protection from the other three lots for what's being detained and cleaned and then discharged from their property.
Could I just suggest if you do conditions of approval, whatever, I think that responsibility, are those decision points, that responsibility probably reside with the applicant to work through what's the best, what those choices may be? And if it goes down from four, down to two, down to maybe one, is it appropriate for the applicant to make that decision?
Yes.
And to that end, we could certainly, I would think the board could condition approval, if one were granted, for the applicant to either come up with a private mechanism, whether it be an HOA, whether it be a maintenance agreement, or to go before the committee and obtain that approval. I think the board needs to choose one or the other. It would be conditioned upon one of those happening, and that would be the applicant's determination ultimately.
Yeah, I mean, if you said it's one of those three things, or whatever, and we have no strong opinion, other than it's got to be one of those three things in principle, then I don't really, personally, whatever makes most sense.
Agreed.
That's certainly acceptable to the applicant.
And just to be clear, other than requesting of the township, the other mechanisms would all be recorded, they'd be in language subject to review and approval of the appropriate board professionals, et cetera, and obviously, one of those mechanisms would have to be in place as a fallback should there be an approach to the township and the township committee decline.
Right.
But if that's the stipulation, we have the stipulation, we have the engineer's testimony as to the reasonableness of the imposition of a condition, so I think we're probably able to move forward if the board's ready to move forward.
I'd like to ask a general question, and it's open for any of the engineers or attorneys to answer, and that, where the applicant? And that is, if the applicant intends to develop the street and all the stormwater improvements as a part of, as phase one, how do we determine when and if the individual subdivision of the four lots can take place? In other words, what if those four lots were to be subdivided, become legal bounded entities, and sold before the improvements are made?
The short would be bonding for the public improvements to be created with the filing of the map, I believe would be the mechanism.
Thank you. Does that answer satisfy everybody?
That certainly makes sense, yes.
Thank you.
We'll take that as a stand. You may.
The technical comments, 4.1 through 4.15, we will comply or have complied with all of those.
Fair enough. And I guess just a point of clarity, we touched on it earlier with respect to New Jersey American Water and the sewer ban.
Which number, Joe?
That is 5.5.
Oh, 5?
5.5 on page seven. There is a existing point of understanding, as Mr. Perizy noted, that there is an intention for two connections to the sewer system that predated the sale of the system in American Water. They are holding off from declaring that right until they get confirmation through American Water, and that is why they're showing viability of four septics. The intent for any development like this is never to create septics if you don't have to, but if American Water creates the delay by not obligating to 2025, and there's an interest to build, they may proceed with four septics instead. And then be transitioned over afterwards and abandon the septics.
Could I make one last point on the bioretention system, since this is such a critical element to this project? I struggle to find any details as to the design of this bioretention system. Did I miss something? Is it in?
They're in, yeah, they're in the plan set.
Could you point that to me?
Yes.
What plan?
And just as a point of clarity, we'll refer to it as a small-scale infiltration basin, not bioretention?
Well, it says bioretention on the plan.
It does, and it's one of the comments, and I point that out because bioretention is heavily planted. Infiltration basins are sand-bottom filters, so they have a different appearance. So the landscaping you see on the plan is specifically to the exterior of the basin in the graded area, and so they function differently, and they have different maintenance requirements.
Sheet 19 has the basin detail, and then sheet 20 has the outlet structure detail of the basin. And then sheet eight of the plan shows the on-plan view information.
Okay, well, again, our board engineer has clarified that this is really not being characterized as a bioretention system, it's an infiltration basin.
Again, on sheet 19, that's what it's called on sheet 19.
Okay, but on other plans, it's called bioretention.
Correct, and it would be cleared up as part of a condition of approval.
I'm sorry, if I could just ask a question following up, though. Sheet 19 and 20, the details, aside from the fact that they reference infiltration as opposed to small-scale bioretention, are you testifying that those details are still what is proposed, or they're going to be changed and subject to the review and approval of the engineer?
The details that are shown are what are going to be installed.
Okay, so it's just a misnomer? Is that correct, Joe?
Yes. There's a discrepancy of use of two terms, which are specifically two different types of units.
Got it. The details are good, the name is wrong.
Correct.
Apologize, but that's how we simplify engineering for an attorney. Thank you.
Do any members of the board have any other questions for the engineer? Engineering questions?
Just one question regarding lighting on the streetway. Is there any planned lighting proposed?
We are not proposing street lighting as part of the application.
That's a pretty long stretch without any lights there. I think the last light is closer to Skyview, and then on the other side, it's more down the hill.
I believe under one of the previous applications on this property, or this particular property, the applicant was previously informed that he should not have street lighting as part of the application. Should the board want some streetlights? I don't think we would be opposed to adding one.
It's a little windy, and it's an upover hill, so there is a grade there, and it kind of, it's not a sharp turn, but there is a bit of wave in that, at least one light up towards the top.
I think we could add that, right?
That's not a problem.
And just so I'm clear on the stipulation, is it one light on the top, or do we want to make it subject to the review and approval of our engineer, but the anticipation it's one light on the top?
It wanted to match the decor of the neighborhood, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So I've got two, one silly comment, and then one, whether it's planning comment or not, but, well, we've got the, the silly comment is, on the flats, whatever, it says per planning board comments on August 30. That may be the TRC, it may be professionals, but in my view, that wasn't a planning board.
The response letter?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a TRC meeting, yeah.
Yeah, could we just refrain from using planning board comments there and just articulate exactly what that committee was? Just so we don't have, oh, you looked at this before, and, oh, what's going on? We haven't seen it before tonight, or on 30 until tonight. The road itself, is that a planning question or a technical question?
I guess it could be both, depending on the level of the question.
I do think it's on the document. And this is maybe a question I'd like to ask Mr. Perizy at some point, recognizing we have gone through this process before, and recognizing those in the past, this is the present, that's the past. There were some very distinct comments from the public and the board about the road and whether it's a through road or whether it's a cul-de-sac.
So I'll get into the planning, and this will be part of the planning question?
Perfect, then I'll hold off on that.
Want me to, are we good to move forward with planning?
Any other engineering questions?
We are not considering a cul-de-sac, this will be a through road.
Liz, did you have any questions on the engineering side?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, what I would like to do now is take a no more than five-minute break so we can stretch our legs, and then we will come back and we will have questions from the public on the engineering testimony that we've just heard. Five minutes.
All right, we're back on the air.
Mr. Chair, if you would, before you open to questions on engineering, we would like to ask that any questions regarding whether the road should be put through or not be-
Please let me make the announcements.
Sure, okay.
We're going to open the meeting now to test, questions from the public on the testimony that you have heard the engineer give tonight. Only that testimony, and no comments. This is a question period only. If there is something about what the engineer testified to that you do not understand, you can ask him to clarify. If you start offering comments about alternative strategies that you would prefer, I will ask you to stop. Okay, any questions on the testimony of the engineer?
And we just need names and address first.
Jessica Brennan, Skyview Terrace Sterling. I just have two clarifying questions. So, you said that two-
Use the microphone, please.
Two point eight acres only will be developed under the plan?
Yeah, the proposed limit of disturbance is just over two point eight eight acres.
So, will that be another deed restriction on the four properties?
I don't know if it's a deed restriction, but it's, it's the approved disturbance as part of the project.
So, how's that enforced?
Would it be, if you went beyond the approved disturbance, you wouldn't have relief for any further steep slope disturbance at least, correct, Mr. Sully?
Correct.
So, that'd be a violation of the approval i- in that circumstance, and that would be enforced by the township?
Regardless of which lot it is on, because obviously two of the lots are not in the critical area.
The, so the, the limit, the limit of disturbance as shown on the plan will be under the jurisdiction of the Soil Conservation District? So, the first offense would be in violation provided by the Soil Conservation District, that they exceeded the limits. Now, that is not in total area, it is specific to essentially a meets and bounds of that described area on the plan. So, if they were to go fifty feet in one direction that they don't show on the plan, that would be a violation itself, even if they've only cleared up to an acre of the two point eight acres. They can subsequently submit amended plans to change those limits, and at some point they go from administrative change with this approval to requiring additional amended subdivision relief from this board.
And so, that is what would enforce the tree line that you noted on the plans?
Correct.
Okay, and then, did you calculate in terms of potential square footage, what size the houses could be on those four lots?
We didn't calculate individual structures.
Use the microphone, please.
Yeah, sorry.
We didn't calculate individual structures because we don't know what could potentially be built there. The boxes that are shown as representative potential structures are sixty by forty, so there are twenty-four hundred square feet footprints, which are generally representative of a type of structure that would be in that development.
Anyone else from the public with a question?
Chris Fischetti, Delaware Avenue Sterling.
First, I'm sorry, can you spell your last name, please?
F-I-S-C-H-E-T-T-I.
F-I-S-C-H-
E-T-T-I. Mr. Chairman, we permitted to, in the framework of engineering, ask the board any clarifying questions?
This is a time for questions of the, on the testimony that you just heard. At the end of the hearing, we'll open it up to a broader range of comments.
Understood, thank you. From an engineering standpoint, what is the benefit to the municipality of a connecting Delaware Avenue from Morris Town Road, you know, all the way through?
There's been no testimony regarding the road at this point, so I would ask that that be held off till the plan-
I disagree, there was a testimony it's a through road. Did you not just, did you not have testimony it's a through road?
Just, factual statements, that's being proposed, that's all that was given, there's no expert-
That's testimony, that was said and it's on the, it's on the diagram, so to me, that's testimony, there we go.
I'm not asking it to be held off altogether, I'm simply asking for it to be asked after-
Are you objecting or not, because I'll advise the board, and the board can rule?
I'm objecting to the question till the planning testimony's been offered, yes.
We're not going to entertain discussions about alternatives or questions about the roadway at this time. After the planner, after the planning testimony, we'll consider that question, but we're talking engineering only at this point, and I think I made that point clear.
Yeah, I asked specifically what the engineering benefit was to a connection of the road, I mean, seems simple enough to me.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Elaine Gebig, G-E-B-I-G, from Chestnut Run. As you know, Chestnut Run has an HOA, and I served on the board there for ten years, which is where the, my question is coming from, because I've had many experiences-
Ma'am, you have to get right to the question-
I just wanted to give you my background.
Because I can't swear you in, it's not comment time, so.
Okay, I don't, I just wanted you to know where I was coming from with my question. My concern is that if you establish-
It has to be a question of the witness, the engineer.
An HOA, and they can't, or they won't clean and maintain that basin, what are the ramifications for those of us who are below that basin, as far as water problems, would we incur? And I, that's why I wanted you to have my background, because I'm familiar with can't and won't when it comes to HOAs. They may read that, but-
We understand.
So, it, the legal mechanism will be figured out at a later date of what type of entity is controlling and maintaining that device. If there is a lack of maintenance or a lack of oversight of the overall system and it starts to fail, the town has the right through an easement to come in and fix anything and backcharge to the HOA, or whatever the legal entity is, to rectify the issue.
And to charge back to that entity that failed, correct?
Okay, I'm sorry, I understand the legal, and I guess that was part of my question as well, but how about the physical water? While we run into the problem and the problem occurs, what would that physical problem of water be, especially as to those of us who are down the hill at Chestnut Run?
I could speculate on a lot of things, I don't know exactly what would be failing in this exact scenario that you're speaking, so I can't say exactly what could potentially happen. I will note that there's an emergency spillway that has been designed on the basin and would meet all the soil erosion and standard sediment control standards, as well as dam safety, which is noted in the engineer's letter. And that spillway is directioned towards the southern portion of the property, going towards the railroad, no, down towards the railroad, so that if it did overtop, it's directed away from Chestnut Run, but it's going to follow the natural topography down towards the railroad.
So, the short answer, there's a contingency built into the basin that will then take overflow and direct it down towards the train-
In the very rare occurrence that every single outlet structure is clogged or not working, that is the ultimate failsafe.
Okay, that's the worst case scenario you just mentioned.
Correct.
Are there any other questions about the engineering testimony?
Holmes, Chestnut Run.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your first name.
Glenn, excuse me.
Glenn, thank you.
Glenn Holmes, Chestnut Run. I'm just looking at the two areas. You have a, it's called homogeneous characteristics, whereas you have townhouses on one side, and some luxury houses, some grander ones, within the overlook and Skyview neighborhood. What are these four lots catering to? Are they, they seem smaller than usual, for, and it's not contiguous with the townhouses, or it's not really contiguous with this? It seems like you're putting two gallons, you're trying to squeeze more out of it than what it should be, whereas you could build two nice houses that are contiguous with that nice neighborhood, rather than squeezing in the extra-
So, again, the, for the R2 zone, all four lots are fully compliant from a lot area, setback requirements-
Except for the storage.
Nothing with the storage.
And there's a lot of variance that's being requested, but it's like, they don't fit, and you keep asking for these things-
I'm sorry, sir, I think he's gonna, I think he's gonna wait, I think he's gonna testify as a planner about these variances, so that may be relevant afterwards.
That's a downer. Do you have another question? No, 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 I just wanted, it doesn't actually fit, that's my little-
That's a, that's a-
I'm sorry, sir. I asked you to offer questions, but not comments. You've said twice now, it doesn't fit. Now, that's not a question. And, and if you come up here again, I will ask you to confine yourself to questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm with you, thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, Counselor, you want to proceed with the planning testimony?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Osuch, please put your planner's hat on for me.
Sure.
Have you performed a planning analysis of this application?
Uh, yes.
Would you please take us through your analysis?
Sure, so, for the members of the board, the first thing I did is I started to look at the planning and the zoning of this particular property, and in doing so, I kind of reviewed the land use ordinance, and specifically the purposes of your local land use ordinance, and I, I think it's important to kind of go through that to kind of understand what's thought of or wanted in Long Hill Township, and specifically within this area of Long Hill Township and within the zone. So, one of the purposes of land use ordinance is, the intent and purpose of this ordinance is to implement the goals of Long Hill Township Master Plan. Specifically, we want to implement the goals of the master plan, so remember that. The overall goals of the land use ordinance include, A, to conserve and enhance the essential rural character of Long Hill Township in order to best provide for health, safety, and the general welfare of the township residents. Again, important to know. B, to maintain the township's identity as a fundamentally low-density community and ensure that the future development is compatible with and sensitive to the existing areas and the established neighborhoods. And then, D, to ensure that the road improvements along county and township roadways are limited to those that address existing traffic safety problems, and are undertaken in a way that strongly support the overall goals of the master plan. Again, that strongly support the overall goals of the master plan, and preserve and enhance the tree-lined roads that help create this desired rural character of the township. And then, further into the land use ordinance, there's circulation goals of the land use ordinance. And again, to ensure that the road improvements along county and township roadways- And again, to ensure that the road improvements along county and township roadways are limited to those that address the traffic concerns. To ensure that the design of new roadways and upgrading of existing roadways and streetscapes are undertaken in a manner that are sensitive to the environment, and rural to the, or to the rural character of the township. And then lastly, to encourage development of new sidewalks in areas of relatively high pedestrian traffic, and to encourage the use of creative sidewalk design wherever appropriate to honor the township's tree corridors and rural streetscapes. So I think, understanding all that just kind of helps to understand the land use ordinance goals, and you'll kind of see my argument as it pertains to this project in a minute.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask, where, you quoted those, where did you quote them from specifically?
I'll have to pull up the land use ordinance, but the land use ordinance's purpose is right at the beginning of the chapter of the land use ordinance, and the-
That's not the master plan, that's the land use ordinance?
It's the land use ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
So, the applicant is seeking relief from a few different sections of the ordinance, and that would be, namely, 142.1A, where no principal building, accessory building, parking area, pool, tennis court, patio, or deck shall be located in whole or in part within a critical area. The applicant seeking relief from this on what we're calling Block 13.303, lots 16.011 and 16.012, where the future lot development of those lots are anticipated to encumber within the critical areas. And, so we would ask for that relief at this time, so that if there was future development, they wouldn't have to come back to the board. 142.1D, where all lots shall provide principal building setbacks of at least 50 feet from any critical area located in the front or rear yard of the lot, and 25 feet from any critical area located in the side yard of a lot. And again, the applicant is seeking relief from this ordinance section on the same two lots, so Block 13.303, Lots 16.011 and 16.012. And then the last item of relief that I have noted is from Section 131 of the bulk requirements, where the C-zone, the conservation zone, minimum lot area is three acres, and we have the existing non-conforming condition on Lot 16.012 in the future, where 2.86 acres exists and is proposed.
And again, just to clarify, that's the area of that lot within the C-zone, the lot itself is substantially in excess of three acres, correct?
Correct. So I think all, all of the items noted, or all the relief noted could be argued under both a C1 and a C2. So I'll kind of go through the arguments, and I think to combine them all into one big application, which I think it all falls into one big application accordingly. So, for a C1 variance, by reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of a specific property, or by reason of exceptional topographic conditions or physical features uniquely affecting a specific piece of property, or by reason of extraordinary and exceptional situation uniquely affecting a specific piece of property, or the structure lawfully existing thereon, the strict application of any regulations would result in a peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties or exceptional and undue hardship upon the developer of the property. So as noted in the previous testimony, I believe the existing property has a lot of these existing characters that would be defined as exceptional topographic, exceptional, exceptional situations uniquely affecting the property, namely, there are the existing critical slopes on the southern portion of the property, and further to that, there's an existing easement that's bisecting the property, and that easement is defining where any potential connection of Delaware Ave. could go, based on the physical location of Delaware Ave on either side of the property, and the way that that easement has been described. Accordingly, since that easement defines where any road or any development would have to go of that road, the lots south of that are set in a location that they couldn't be moved further away from any critical area because the roadway or the easement within that center portion of the property is providing a hardship to avoid that.
Just to clarify that in a practical sense, what you're saying is, where the easement is now, and that's where the road effectively would have to be, that keeps you from moving all the lots further north and avoiding the critical slopes areas.
Correct. And specifically with the geometry of the road requirements on both the eastern and western portion of the property, where the road has to connect with the existing road.
Can I just, so thank you for going through that, because it definitely goes through my mind. If you just repeat that again, you are, the road, road direction and shape, basically-
Correct.
Is determined by pre-existing conditions and situations.
Correct.
And you had limitations as to how far you could potentially move it further north, maybe more curvy, but you could move the properties up on the south side.
Correct, but we can move it because the easement's defined.
Yeah, so that's a defaulting situation.
Correct.
Thank you.
And just to clarify even more, it's, it's not even a defined easement, this is actually a paper street. This is already recognized by the township.
It's a roadway easement.
Not dedicated yet, but it's-
Correct. So for a C2 variance in an application or an appeal related to a specific piece of property, the purposes of the MLUL would have to be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements, and the benefits of the deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements would substantially outweigh any detriments. So looking at the purposes of zoning in the MLUL, specifically, Purpose H, to encourage location and design of transportation routes which promote the free flow of traffic while discouraging the location of such facilities and routes, which would result in congestion and blight. Again, Delaware Ave is being connected as part of this application. And more importantly, not only is Delaware Ave being completed as part of this application, specifically within the master plan of the township, Delaware Ave is noted in the circulation plan of the adopted master plan as being in need of full connection. Specifically, it's noted as, this proposed roadway connection would provide the 200-foot missing link between the two existing sections of Delaware Ave. This linkage has been anticipated since at least 1972, and in fact, the roadways in Sterling and Long Hill Sunrise West Developments were designed to permit this future connection.
Can you just tell us where that is and which master plan you're reading from?
It's from the 1996 master plan, and it's under the circulation plan section of master plan.
Thank you, and when you referenced H, you were talking about Purpose, Section 2, Sub-H of the municipal land use law?
Correct.
Thank you.
So again, I believe that this connection would provide that free flow of traffic that's always been anticipated by the township. It will allow for emergency vehicles to traverse two dead-end streets that currently dead-end, and allow for those vehicles to better serve the community and/or surrounding communities, God forbid there's any emergency. Purpose I, to promote the desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. Again, it's noted in the purposes of land use ordinance that the trees, or that the roads be designed with tree lines and to fit in with the, or with the surrounding environment. And I think we're promoting that visual environment by proposing additional street trees. I think we're going to add additional street lighting to mimic the surrounding neighborhood. Again, building to that look that fits in with the township goal and that rural community that they're looking for. So from a positive criteria standpoint, I believe this application generally meets the goals and the vision of land use ordinance. I believe the connection of Delaware Ave, which has always been contemplated since at least 1972, would be completed. It'll allow for those emergency vehicles to get through. It's going to provide a, excuse me, a pedestrian path via sidewalk connection between the existing stubs of Delaware Ave and further connect the communities. The site has been designed in a way that we're avoiding the state-regulated areas that are existing on the property. As we kind of went through in, and long and drawn-out process, the site has been designed with a comprehensive stormwater management system, which will ultimately detain, treat, and support the overall development. And then there's, you know, there are steep slopes on the properties, but the, the project has been reviewed and approved by the Soil Conservation District, and any of those steep slopes that are affected as part of the development would, with proper construction techniques and the utilization of the state rules and the soil conservation rules, would be maintained and protected post-construction. And then we're adding a tree-lined roadway to mimic the surrounding neighborhood. So I think there's a lot of positive criteria that comes out of this application, should the board vote to approve the application. For the negative criteria, the board may not exercise its power to grant a C-variance otherwise warranted unless the so-called negative criteria has been satisfied. No variance or other relief may be granted without showing that such variance or other relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and that substantial detriment to the public good is important. I don't see any substantial detriment to the public good. The only potential negative impact that I see is potentially visual impacts from the neighboring properties of seeing a new development that connects the overall development. And again, I think we're lessening that impact by providing additional buffers with landscaping on both the western and eastern sides of the property, nearest to the neighboring properties, as well as adding the street trees that'll mimic the overall community feel with the street, street tree lines, or, I said that backwards, street tree-lined streets. And then, will not substantially impair the intent or the purposes of the zoning plan and the zoning ordinance. And again, I think, reading through that zoning plan and the master plan, and providing those goals of the land use ordinance, I, I think this project specifically works for the land use ordinance, and what we're showing fits in perfectly with what the town is looking for, specifically with connecting ultimately Delaware Ave, which has ultimately been contemplated since 1972. So I believe the application has provided the adequate testimony for both a C1 and a C2, and I believe it would be in the board's right to grant those variances.
Thank you, I have nothing further for this witness at this time.
Liz, you want to start?
Yeah, sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say for clarification, in my letter, I indicated that they really only needed two variances based on what they're showing in their plans. One was for minimum lot size in the C-zone, and one was for the potential proposed 16.012 impacting the critical areas. They are sort of doing belts and suspenders by seeking these additional variances. One on 16.011, where at, right now, they're showing a building envelope not impacting the critical areas, but they are just sort of, whatever, taking contingencies and, and seeking that variance now. And then the other one is, I'll just say this, the proposed lot 16.012 is a split-zone lot, it's half in the R2, half in the C-zone. No matter what happened on this 10 and a half acre property, that portion of the C-zone would always be undersized, you know, so it, it's just the undersized, the portion that's on this, in the C-zone is undersized for the C-zone. And so I do believe that's a hardship. The other variance that they are seeking is regarding the, the lot width, lot frontage for the proposed lot 16.012. And they meet the R2, that lot, as it, as it would be situated on Delaware Avenue, it's in the R2 zone, the R2 zone has a minimum lot width of 150 feet. They meet that. They're saying that the portion that's in the C-zone doesn't meet that. It, it's deficient for the C-zone, the C-zone, it's minimum lot width of 250 feet. I actually think they don't need this variance, because I think that the way the ordinance is defined, the lot width has to do with its orientation on the street, and this is not at all, that, that's another hardship, is that the portion of the C-lot is actually not on a street. So, I think those were the two things I wanted, those were the things that I wanted to clarify, just as the board deliberates on, on the proofs.
Thank you. Board members have any questions on the planning testimony?
I have one question, if I might. So you're doing the variance for critical areas, I was just curious, what's, did you consider a variance for front yard setback? As opposed to 75 feet, for example, go to 50 feet and then move the house, obviously in 16.012, closer to the street, and then avoid potentially a critical area a little bit?
We wanted to show that the lots were viable from a zoning setback perspective. And in doing so, we want to show conforming lots from a zoning perspective. So we're trying to avoid the setback relief as far as the front yard setback.
Okay, so I'll re-
So it could be a trade-off in a, in a development application for the individual property, right?
It could, but if, if we're, we're saying that, that's not what we're asking for relief for now, so that could potentially be a variance in the, in the future.
Here's my, just my gut reaction, right? And this is, this is a question, it's not an opinion. Why not go for something I think is a little bit potentially, you know, you've got a choice, potential, you've got a choice here, right? Because your, your proposal is 75 feet back hitting critical area. As a choice, you could say, I could potentially move it nearer and go for the setback variance, which may be, I think, is probably a safer way to think about it.
So, I will clarify, one thing that I didn't note previously is the way that the critical area ordinance is written, is you're really only supposed to measure critical area slopes over a 10-foot vertical drop.
Yeah.
So anything less than 10 feet isn't a critical area. This specific critical area is only eight feet. We were being conservative in showing what we're showing. So it's not by ordinance, it's not actually a critical area, we're just trying to be overly cautious that it could potentially be looked at as a critical area, and that's why we're asking for the relief. If we went verbatim from the ordinance, this wouldn't even be shown as a critical area.
So you're actually being conservative here?
Correct.
In, in going through this, I walked that piece of property today, and that's quite a steep drop, about 100-foot back, it goes down quite a bit.
Correct.
It's 10 feet, 20 feet, I didn't measure.
It, it's, the way the ordinance is written, it's specifically measured across the contours on a 10-foot-
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Basis, so that's also kind of subjective of where you're measuring along a contour, and somebody could be out there measuring contours differently, depending on where you take a shot to make contours. So again, we're just trying to be more conservative in saying it is a critical area, even though by the letter of the way the ordinance is written, you could actually argue that it's not a critical area.
Okay, so you did obviously did, did think about this and-
We did think about it, and that's, that's kind of part of the reason why we were showing that.
Any other questions from the board members?
Yeah, what if we-
Would you hold on a second, Tom? Deborah, the red light is flashing on the microphone.
Okay, I'll get new batteries.
Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. What if you didn't ask for the variance, and what if we said, "Forget about whatever the house is, or the building, the structure that's going on there, and let that come before the board when someone purchased the lot." And then they come and say, "Okay, this is what we want to try to build there." And then they have to go through the process.
Why would, why would a potential buyer want to, want to, want to inherit that problem?
Why do, why do we want to inherit- Why do we, why do we want to inherit the problem?
This is the right time to do it, is a subdivision.
I don't know, it's belts and suspenders.
I'm gonna kick myself when I get home for this.
That's all right. I won't be there.
Thank you.
I'm playing devil's advocate.
This, this question goes to the same discussion that I started earlier about the, the limit of what will be constructed under this project and triggering a major development. And regardless of if, they're currently proposing to grade that portion of the land to create a pad for development. So it would remove that critical area in its entirety to be able to do so. So once they clear the land and grade the pad, now this application, as long as those extents are part of this application, it is the appropriate time to discuss the technical nature of disturbing those slopes and that variance.
So we can say that we are, if this application were to go through, we would be looking at four properties that will be cleared.
Correct.
And set as a pallet?
Correct.
Or something to be constructed there.
Specifically at the limit of disturbance that's shown on the plans.
Right?
Yes.
For where these four potential structures go for the future development.
Pad-ready viability.
Pad-ready viability, okay. So I just want to, in my mind's eyes, see when I drive down that road, what am I gonna see?
Right.
Okay? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if no other board members have any questions, may I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Thank you. Make sure no, okay, of, of the planner, and I may ask, ask our planner as well. Um, we, there is, the applicant does not require any impervious coverage in non-critical areas for lot 16.012, the, the maximum permitted?
We're not seeking relief for that.
You're not exceeding it?
Correct.
Even by proposal?
Yeah, we believe, we, we have a table on the plan that shows that we believe that they conform with those requirements, so we're not seeking relief.
Seventy percent or under?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then two, and I, I would pose this to the, uh, both our planner and Andy, but, uh, I believe we need with respect to the deviations requested for the setbacks, various setbacks to the critical area, as well as the potential footprint, uh, or two, or actually just one potential footprint within a critical area. Is there at least some estimate of the magnitude of deviation for this board to consider and rule on? I.e.
Distance that we're asking for?
Distances of, uh, if it's not 50-foot and 25-foot respectively, approximately, what is it that you're seeking with respect to the front yard, rear yard setback from the critical area and the 20, and the side yard setback to the critical area respectively, uh, as well as how much, uh, of the building footprint potentially would be within the critical area for lot 16, proposed lot 16.012? If we ha- if we have that, I haven't, I missed it.
Well, we're eliminating the critical area all, essentially all together in lot 16.012. So the only remaining setback-type issue would be if there were a little further encroachment towards the critical area on 16.011. So I think your question would only be relevant to the 16.011.
I see what you're saying, just to, uh, take attack from one of our board members, and a, and an excellent one in my opinion, let me repeat it so I make sure I understand it. Uh, and that is that, uh, if you're entirely, uh, if you're proposing relief for a footprint to be entirely within a critical area on 16.012, I get it, and I take it then for 16.012, the setbacks are zero versus 25 feet side yard setback.
Right.
And zero versus 50 feet front yard setback and rear yard setback. Didn't even need to go to law school for that one. Uh, but also with respect to, uh, 16.011, uh, the extent to which, if at all, you're seeking relief for a deviation with tho- from those setbacks, yeah, what is that magnitude?
We requested five feet. And that, that was.
Five feet into each, the rear yard, front yard, and, uh, side yard?
Such as an only side yard? Or is it rear yard on that one?
Again, it depends on where you're taking a look at this and without having future structures fully designed.
Let me ask it this way, where are we dangerously close such that we're seeking conservative, cautious relief?
It's the rear of the structures in that 50-foot setback. Uh, I believe what we were gonna say is we would be 30 feet into that setback.
So the 30 feet into the 50-foot required rear yard setback to critical area?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying? Okay, and, and again, I don't, I just want to know what the applicant's asking for, so the board, among other things, the board can determine whether to grant that relief or not, they need to know what it is.
Because on my understanding too is that it also includes the parking areas, I believe, too, right?
So 30 feet into the 50-foot required rear yard setback, you're not asking for any relief, uh, uh, even potentially for the front yard setback to critical area or the side yard setback to critical area?
No, we are asking for that.
Okay, maybe, I might need law school.
On 16.011?
On 011, correct. 16.012, it's a 0-foot setback.
Well, I got that. 16.011, 30 feet into the 50-yard, uh, foot rear, rear, required rear yard setback to critical area, how many feet into the 50-foot required for the front yard setback to critical area?
There is none.
Which lot are we talking about? I, I thought we were.
16.011. Proposed.
There is none for the front yard.
There's nothing in the front, it's only in the rear that we would be affecting.
Right, so I said that, it's just the rear yard setback.
Correct.
Okay. Not the side yard setback and not the front yard setback for 16.011.
The side yard is a 25-foot, and we would not be, we would not be potentially touching that, is what we believe.
I hope the board got it too.
What have you said?
Just one last point on that.
What's that?
This, one last point on that is that it would only be for, the relief being provided is limited to the critical areas within the proposed limit of disturbance and their buffers. So because the plan indicates a limit of disturbance that cannot be exceeded without amended approval, the variance relief is specific to only those portions. Everything outside the limit of disturbance would require further variance relief if they were to disturb those critical slopes at a later date.
I understand that limitation is to be the limit of disturbance.
Not, not to quibble on this, but we talked about two acres or so, 2.86 acres of disturbance. How easy is it to determine what that is on these maps?
When you say, how easy is it to determine? It's, it's the tree line that's shown on those plans. That, that dark, clouded line, that's the 2.8 acres of disturbed area.
So the whole area around this?
Right, so if you go on sheet eight of the plans?
Sheet, I got it, yeah.
That shows all your, your limits of grading.
Yep.
And basically where the topography is tying in, that's your limit of clearing or your, your, your proposed tree line and your limit of disturbance.
So basically, all that area here?
Correct.
Is area of disturbance?
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying.
It would be common practice during construction that that would be staked out by a surveyor to establish the critical points of that limit.
Yeah, that's good, thank you. That just helps visualize. Thank you.
Any further questions from the board?
Just a timeline question. When would that disturbance take place? That may be too far in the future.
Well, again, we, based on the approval?
Yep.
We would start the clock probably 45 days after that. I would tend to say it could happen as early as, uh, less than six months.
So within, in like the next six months, that was, that would start to get cleared out?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
At this point, I'm going to open the meeting to the public for questions on the planning testimony. Once again, I remind you, only questions about the testimony that you heard, and no comments or criticisms or dialogue other than that. Thank you.
And we will just need everyone's name and address again.
Yep, Chris Fashetti. Is this on, can you hear me? Chris Fashetti, Delaware Ave Sterling. Um, and Mr. Chairman, again, if I, if I am mentioning something that you don't feel is in the purview here, please, uh, please stop me, but I think, um, I think this is probably appropriate. Uh, being that the engineer or planner, your planning hat is on, right? You spoke to the 96 master plan, okay? Is this the, uh, page you referenced, map five circulation and sidewalk plan? It sounded like you stated it, but you didn't show it, so if you want to take a look.
You know, there's a, a written-out section in that master plan that describes the circulation of the master plan, so that specific sheet is not what I was referencing to, I was referencing to a written-out portion of the master plan.
Yeah, I mean, I'll continue, you know, I, I think it's appropriate, but again, I'm, I don't make the decisions here.
As long as it's a question, it's appropriate.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so I, I'm in agreement that as part of the 96 master plan, uh, Delaware was a, a proposed reconnection. I'm in agreement, and obviously it's stated right on here. Uh, however, uh, is it accurate, um, that at the time when this was proposed as part of the 96 master plan, lower overlook, which flows into Skyview now, connected road, was not so at the time in the master plan?
Well, I mean, whoever can answer it, because, again, we're referring to portions of the master plan, and that Delaware was a proposed through street, uh, being that there's been other changes and there is a connection from Mars Town Road to the neighborhood now, if that means this connection will not, will be entered or will be connected anymore.
If it's a ques- it has to be a question for the planner, so he can, it's for him, it's for him to answer.
If you firmly stated, yeah, okay, go ahead.
So I wasn't involved in writing or understanding the 1996 master plan. I just went and read what was in there, I looked at the reexamination plans, and nothing is noted to remove Delaware Ave as a connection, uh, contemplated by the township as part of the master plan and/or the reexamination. And I believe in looking at the, um, I think it's the proposed master plan, it still notes that Delaware Ave connection in that upcoming master plan, um, from the township.
Do you know if that was, if that revised master plan that you just referred to, uh, noted that there is now access from Mars Town Road to the development?
I don't think it specifically notes that, it just notes that a need for Delaware Ave to be completed is specifically noted in there.
You, you also mentioned that some of the reasons why you felt it should be connected, ease of traffic, benefit for the community, all that. Have there been traffic studies done to prove, uh, you know, what you're saying, or is that just purely opinion?
I have not performed a traffic study. Um, when people, or when the township writes that master plan, there's a reasoning behind why they vision that road coming through. We're just following the lead of the master plan on why we're connecting that road. And, and it, to your point, I, I think you said traffic flow and everything. Bigger picture, bigger picture in my argument is emergency traffic getting through.
Okay, so when you talk about emergency access, this master plan was written almost 30 years ago, and all of a sudden, with a proposed four additional homes, when I, I, I mean, I sit right on the corner there, and I have one neighbor closest to the closed-off part, there was never a concern for emergencies for me or him, but the addition of four homes, now all of a sudden, there's an emergency access concern. You can see how, uh, you know, again, I'm, I'm not gonna state opinions, but I, I'm just asking the question.
Right, it's, it's not an emergency to those four lots, it's a connection point for the overall community for those emergency vehicles to get somewhere else in a quicker path.
Understood, but it's, there's been no access for emergency vehicles for all these years, now all of a sudden, there's a need for it. I, I mean, that, that's what I'm asking, I guess.
We're talking about a subdivision here, and street, a street that has to be completed in some way, shape, or form to support the subdivision, okay?
But does it?
We're talking about something that has to happen from 2023 going forward. The fact that there wasn't a street there for the past 30 years, because there weren't houses there for the past 30 years, is not relevant to the decision that this application is asking for.
Understood. So is approval of the application, i- is it connected to an opening of the road?
I, I think that's the main thing that we're presenting to the board, is that as part of the subdivision application, we're dedicating right away to connect Delaware Ave through the property, as is noted in the 1996 master plan.
I, I, I guess, maybe I didn't ask my question clearly enough. Is the development of that land, is the opening of the, is the development of that land tied to, uh, having to open the road? Or there, or there are alternatives that legally or engineering-wise or planning-wise appropriate?
I think the easement that's noted on the site, if you read the deeds, and if you go back and read that master plan specifically, all the way back to 1972, the surrounding subdivisions were all designed in a way for that road to fully connect through. We're just going through and making that connection as part of this development.
Even though, when that master plan was written, there have been other roads that have been connected since.
Stick, please stick to the, to the applic- to the testimony you have heard in this application.
He, he just talked about it, Mr. Chairman, so I'm only asking questions, you know, in regards to what he, he talked about. I mean, I, I, I think that's pretty simple to say.
You're, you're asking if it, if it matter, if it's relevant, that, uh, streets have been, have been.
Yeah, absolutely.
Connected in, in the interim?
Of course.
And are you also asking him if the master plan's been changed any, or if it's been carried forward with that, sir, with that, sir, sir, with that same purpose of connecting Delaware Avenue, are you asking him if the master plan, that master plan goal has been carried through, forward by all the master plans and master plan reexamination reports of this planning board and this township since then?
Yeah, I mean, I'm asking if any changes to the master plan, you know, essentially negate the proposed connection of the street.
I think it's probably up to him to answer if he can.
Again, I don't, didn't write the master plan, I didn't vote on the master plan, I don't know, my understanding though, reading it, it specifically notes that Delaware Ave is to be connected as visioned in the master plan. In the reexamination report, that has not been taken out, and in the contemplated upcoming master plan, it's still noted as something that, um, is to be completed. So I believe the township still thinks that that road needs to be connected.
I don't want to keep going in circles here, but I, I, I understand it's still in there, and they haven't taken it out, but you haven't answered my question, if the lower overlook, which was not connected to Skyview, which provides access to that side of the neighborhood from the main road, you can't answer if that's been amended at all. Uh, just that the connection of Delaware Avenue has not been taken out.
There, there's only one road specifically named in the master plan to be completed? I'll give you a guess what it is.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
I'm, I'm not sure I understand how your, how lower overlook is a factor here.
Well, if you live in the neighborhood like I do, or you, I, I think you've lived here a long time, Dennis, I'm sure you know it. Uh, lower overlook is part of this original master plan when the time it was written. I didn't live in the neighborhood in 1996.
Okay, but.
So it, it was closed at one point, this, I think the applicant, you know.
Can I, can I, can I interrupt you?
Go ahead.
And I'd like to take a, if you humor me, maybe I can summarize the question you're trying to ask.
When you say technical contingency, can you kind of build off what you're?
Some benefit to actually getting this work done. Put the master plan aside. If the master plan didn't state that that road had to go through, is there a reason why you would have to have that cut through?
Yeah, because you, naturally, you don't want roads to just dead end, and that the current roads on either side of the property are not engineered in a way that would otherwise allow for emergency vehicles to turn around and get out.
Can I challenge you on the emergency vehicle thing? Because we haven't had that problem over the last 50 years, right?
Right.
I mean, I understand, I understand your reasoning, but it hasn't been a problem.
Okay, excuse, excuse me, but let's stick to questions about the testimony, and opinions and alternatives come later.
I think we were just questioning the testimony.
Correct.
Yeah, and I just want to answer your, your question. How you, you asked me how lower overlook being closed at the time of the master plan is relevant to any of this. You know, one of the benefits that, that the planner testified to was, you know, better for the community connecting the road, but extending Delaware, connecting it from Morris Town, you know, all the way down to essentially Sterling Lake and the neighborhoods around there. Lower overlook was closed, so there is access to that neighborhood from Morris Town Road down lower overlook, which now connects with Skyview. At the time, it didn't, when this connection of Delaware was put in place. I, I want to, I, again, I didn't live here, so Mario would know better than me. His, you know, his family developed the land. So is that, am I stating something that's accurate, or?
Well, technically, you, you should be asking, well, actually, you could ask questions. And Mr. Parisi, he testified earlier, so you could ask him a question.
I can answer your question, but no, we did not develop that land. That went through a lower overlook road to Skyview. That's number one. And number two, you seem to ignore what the planner says. In the future master plan, they also want that road open. So in 96, the lower overlook road was closed. I heard you very clearly, but you're challenging the master plan. It's the wrong form. It's the wrong form. Plenty know. And he mentioned in the future, the master plan wants Delaware Avenue open. So I think you got your answer right there.
Did you, did you testify that the future plan also mentions it? That's coming out every 20 years? You guys have to do it?
I think we've already.
I wouldn't, to be honest, I wouldn't go down that path because that's not been agreed upon. When we did have drafts of the circulation amendment, I'm just trying to pull it up now, we deliberately, deliberately did not discuss that away.
I think.
So do not refer to the master plan that's under discussion.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think it's fair. I want to help the board members. I think it's fair that a draft master plan is just that, a draft master plan. You can certainly refer to, we have a planner who could weigh in on this better than, better than a lawyer, but a draft, a draft, a master plan is one thing, but I think you did testify to a 96 master plan as well as subsequent reexamination reports, which may have, if I understood your testimony correctly, carried it forward perhaps, well, more than perhaps beyond 96. I don't have, how far, and I don't have those dates in front of me, but.
Correct.
But I, but I think in essence, you're also asking him, does that change, do those facts change your analysis as a planner?
Of course.
And, and so let him answer.
No, it doesn't change my findings.
And I, I would also say that, again, regardless of what any future master plan says, and Mario brought it up, if, I guess, in the question to him, if you weren't seeking to subdivide the property, would the road opening even be on the table, whatever the future master plan would say?
I think I'm, if I may, Mr. Chairman, from a legal perspective, and maybe also a planning perspective, Liz can weigh in on this, I think we've established that a draft master plan is not necessarily reliant for, for the board.
You don't have to gavel me. I'm done. Thanks.
But, but the ones that were adopted certainly, well, the planners will testify as to their relevance. So I think he was going to drop the gavel on me, frankly, but see, I'll take the hit.
All right, Jessica Brennan, Skyview Terrace. I'm sorry, I can't remember what your name is.
Use the microphone, please.
In your professional experience, have, do you, have you come across the concept of a cul-de-sac with an emergency access area?
It's not being contemplated as part of this application.
Well, that's not what I asked. Can you answer the question, please?
Have I ever seen a cul-de-sac?
Are you familiar with, are you familiar with the concept of a cul-de-sac with an emergency access area?
That's, that is not a question that's relevant to the testimony that he has given.
It absolutely is.
No, it's, it's.
Part of the reason for opening the road is for emergency access. There is another option that I am asking if he is familiar with and if he has contemplated.
Are you familiar with it?
Yes.
Thank you. That, your question's been answered.
Would that be a viable option for this property?
I don't believe so.
Why?
Because the master plan has always noted a connection of Delaware Avenue through the property, all the way back to 1972.
How would that not be a connection if it was an emergency access?
If you are, if you are attempting to propose an alternative to the application, please save it for the comment period. I think you're going beyond the questioning the testimony that was given. And the testimony was that they would develop the road.
Okay. The testimony was that part of the reason for developing the road as a through road is emergency access concerns.
That is his testimony.
I have asked him whether he contemplated doing that. He said no. My question is why? And now my question is, is it feasible to do that on this property?
I have not looked at it, so I don't know the answer to that question.
What would you need to do to determine that?
You're going, you're going beyond the limits of questioning the testimony.
Let her go.
You know, I think that you should probably look at the parameters for what this public question session is, Chairman. What would you need to do to look at that?
Off the top of my head, I'm not 100% sure. We would have to go out and do some surveys, do some additional analysis of the property, get an understanding of the size of emergency vehicles that would be turning around, assuming that's what you're.
No, I'll give you an example. If you go to the Knoll and Lounsbury, there's a connection there with a emergency vehicle, two distinctly separate entities, similar to this, you've got townhouses and single property this side, distinctly separate, no reason it has to be connected, and there is the capability of, assumably, that they can get the appropriate vehicles through this chain link in that example. So we have a distinct precedent in town, so I suggest you look at that.
And I'm sorry, can you, it was Knoll and what?
Lounsbury.
Lounsbury.
I've got a photo, I can show, I can just show a photo of it as well, if you wish. We're going to go around in circles, to be honest with you. We all know what the issue is. There's a concern about, I don't care what the master plan says. Personally, I know what, I understand. I hear what the residents have been saying this time and prior. If we don't address it and discuss it, and if we come to a conclusion, fine. I have no opinion what the conclusion is. But do not dismiss the concerns of the residents who live both sides of this property. That's all I'm saying. If we don't listen, what's a bloody point? Understand? Everybody understand?
Well, and how do you meet the C2 criteria, right? I actually have a different question, not related to the road. The retention basin and the stormwater management system, is any of that located in the C-zone? Thank you.
All right. At this point, I'm going to start to wrap this up, because I made an announcement several hours ago that we were going to conclude at 10:15. I would like to continue this hearing, and Counselor, do you have any other experts to give testimony, or are you ready for the public comment session?
If the public is finished with their questioning, I'm not sure if that's the case.
Okay. More questions from the public for the planner, followed by a public comment session at the next hearing, and I propose we do that two weeks from tonight, just to keep the momentum going. That would be the 26th.
That's acceptable to the applicant.
Counselor, would you read us a resolution to carry this hearing?
I'll make a quick announcement. This matter will be carried without further notice to our next meeting, September 26, at 7:30 PM at the same location, the municipal building. Again, that's without further notice.
And we need a motion.
And a motion is second, and all in favor is fine. We don't need a roll call vote, and the applicant will give us an extension, a time to act through the end of the month if we need it.
Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're done with this hearing for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right, moving right along, the next meeting, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of our meeting of June 13. You all have a copy of that? Are there any questions, comments, or corrections? Can I have a motion, please, to adopt the minutes of June 13 meeting? Who made that motion?
Aye.
Mayor made.
And I second.
Mayor did.
And Vice Chairman seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please reflect the abstentions for those.
Yeah, I did not vote.
Yeah, we'll get it.
The next item on the agenda says master plan, and I will only recite for you the schedule that Don circulated last week, and that is, we will see the final draft, the nearly final draft, at our next meeting, at which point we will approve it for public hearing at the October 10 meeting. And we will hear public comments on October 10. We will discuss that the following meeting, and we will adopt the master plan at the meeting in November. That's about all there is to say about the master plan, except we have a technical matter, and that is to pass Resolution 2023-13, which directs the Board Secretary to publish notice of the public hearing on October 10. We're doing that tonight, because if we wait till the next meeting, there just won't be enough time to get it in the newspaper on 10 days' notice. So we're going to approve it, prove the, we're going to publish a notice of the hearing, but we will not actually provide the document until after our next meeting on the 26th. Do I hear a motion to adopt Resolution 23-13?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board Secretary, will please publish the notice?
Reflecting an unanimous roll call vote. We don't have to do it. We got it. It was unanimous.
Anyone have anything else before we adjourn?
Yeah, just for clarity, Mr. Chair, when is the public going to see the draft?
Public is going to see the draft on, on the 28th, Thursday, the 28th, two days after our next meeting.
And where can they go see it?
Website, or in my office.
Yep. So it'll be posted on the website, on the planning board portion of the website?
Basically, the way the master plan page, on the planning board set up currently, we will, it'll be pushed down, and there will be a proposed title, you know, proposed master plan with it at the top of the page.
So all residents who are interested in seeing the draft will go to the Long Hill Township website, go to government, government, planning board, and then from that page, they'll be able to see where the master plan is.
Then you have to click on master plan.
And you click on master plan, which is in the left-hand margin, and then once you're in there, so four clicks, you get to the draft.
Or you can walk to the clerk's, to the Board Secretary's office and pick up a copy.
Well, true. And actually, I think by MLUL standards, we also have to have a copy in the clerk's office.
You do.
Yes.
Okay.
And so there will be available copies.
And that would be compliant with the MLUL, because it'll be at least 10 days prior to the public hearing date that it'll be available in the clerk's office, as well as, even better, perhaps, or additionally, on the website. So legally, it's sufficient.
Thank you. And are we going to, sorry, there was a part two to this. Are we going to allow Zoom?
Are we going to allow what?
Zoom for public comments?
No, the, at the beginning of the year, as per Board Attorney, we were advised that because these are hearings, these are quasi judicial hearings, it's not appropriate to have Zoom, because the board could possibly potentially be voting on that. So if anyone is interested in commenting or providing, asking questions or commenting, they have to appear at the hearing.
It's, the, there are levels. There are land development application hearings, such as the one that transpired this evening, and my legal advice is, those should not be done in a hybrid fashion, particularly when the township has adopted, having those, and the board has adopted having those hearings done in person. It's a mistake in my opinion to try to have a hybrid for those. As far as other public hearings that are not land development hearings, where witness credibility and the like may not be as important, while it's still my advice that it's preferable to have it all done in person, when we have taken the position of having in-person hearings, it is less critical, in my opinion. Sorry for the nuance there, but it's levels of recommendation. I want to be clear.
I've received a few questions from the public with regards to accepting written comments. What's the position with regards to written comments?
The problem with written questions is that they're not here for response and back and forth and the like. Again, frankly, to nuance it, and I know it's always troubling when we nuance, but it would be prohibited in the context of a land development application like, such as the one we heard this evening. It's arguable whether it's discretionary, but strongly advised against, if I may, to do written questions.
So oral hearings?
In, in, in-person public hearing is recommended.
Got it.
Nothing else? Mr. File, your turn.
Motion to adjourn.